Call the meetings, who are they? The municipal meetings of 2012. Roll call on Alderman.
Hey.
Here.
Kinsella.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Regent.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Silsby.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Orland.
Here. And the Alderman President, roll call department heads.
Police Chief Clay.
Here.
Mayor Chief Langson.
Here.
Robert Sprague.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Boris Carmile.
Here.
Jamie Maiter.
Here.
Tim Gregoritz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearmann.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Shaffer.
Chuck Shaffer is excused this evening. This time with everyone's police and family, we have Voice Scout Troop 553 from Tower View Baptist Church. This is eleven Matthew during the east part of Donald. Would you gentlemen want to come forward to the leaders in the pledge? Father, come forward, they're here tonight working on our citizenship in a community. You ready to go on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, it's always nice to see Scouts here, I just, I wish you all well as you continue to pursue your rank of eagle, which I know many of you have looked at some of your merit badge stashes out there in the lobby a while ago, some of you are getting pretty close. Do we have any Eagle Scouts in your group here already? Any of them, you're all several Life Scouts though. Okay, well keep up the good work, it's, remember once you're an Eagle, you're Eagle for life. And it's, it says a lot about your character, keep that in common, so good luck. At this time, we will, we have no public carry this evening, open public participation, we ask that when you do get recognized to speak, you come up to the microphone, you give your name and address, and you keep your comments to two to three minutes about the topic that's on your mind, so this time, yes sir, back to the far corner.
Still 513-18 South 29th Street, Belleville. I'm going to charge Belleville with discrimination and unfair enforcing the codes of ordinance and codes of ordinances. My neighbors, I took up a survey of my neighbors, and my neighbors say my yard is fine. And I am due to my fifth court appearance, I got appointed up to the courthouse, there'll always morons up there, for the fifth time. And Dorothy over there, her neighbor's got a huge pile of trash in the yard, and that's been reported, that's been, I bet you, three or four years. And I've reported it half a dozen times, and there's other places in Belleville that have my yard, but like a soft court. And Belleville's not going to enforce the codes uniformly, there's something wrong, if you ask me, that is discrimination and unfair.
Okay.
And as far as the chickens go, one of the Aldermen says chickens bite, they're noisy and they're smelly. Well, there's a lot of people in Belleville that fit that definition also. And I don't think anybody's going to move out of Belleville on a kind of two or three chickens, but they might, if they move it out of their groves on a kind of these smelly, noisy, biting neighbors, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
My name is Christopher Wambly, I live at 1 Rolling Ridge, Billstown, Illinois. Speaking today about the city's health insurance. I know that former winters had it for a number of years now, the city might ask what another group can do for you, and taking over to some of the numbers for the city, you have roughly about fifty-some retirees that are on the group, they could reasonably come up, form their own retiree group, which would save the city some money, they could probably get health insurance for a cheaper rate as well. Also, looking at just the plan design in general, if I had to sum it up in one word, I would say that the plan is outdated. Most, most companies, a lot of cities are no longer running a zero deductible plan. Even if you were to raise it a small amount, that could be a huge room for savings for the city. Going with something like a $750 deductible plan, you're looking at somewhere in the vicinity of quarter of a million hours a year that the city could be ready to save. There are other areas, other things that could be done, for example, there are new drug programs out there that a lot of companies are offering, you could probably save another four percent in that range. And then, there are other things, like you said, that could be done, that doesn't seem to be getting done. And that's about it, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Anyone else? Step up to the microphone.
Joseph Horace, 624 North Church Street, Belleville, also a city Belleville Fire Department employee. Wanted to talk regarding the insurance on behalf of employees and taxpayers, regarding the insurance, we've requested to ask that the city would give the opportunity for other agencies to offer a bit on health insurance. And then how this all came about was that, one of our firefighters ran into an employee of Leversville and asked about how much they paid for health insurance, and I told him I was fed, no way you can compare Leversville to Belleville, different tax pay, different numbers and so forth, so we didn't talk to their brokers, and their brokerage firm offers a whole different aspect of perspective, and yet I've not seen any other agency offer the service. That would eliminate FAS, which is where the city pays over $100,000 for services, it would eliminate most of work for the insurance clerk at the clerk's office here at the city hall, and all we've asked is to offer, ask you to offer fair bids to other agencies. I circulated amongst other people, over 200 petitions here, residents, city of Belleville, not just employees, and ask that you consider that, thank you.
Okay, we're going to answer these questions.
All right.
Okay. Anyone else this evening, yes ma'am?
My name's Lorraine Morris, I live at 618 South Jackson Street, and basically on a home state employee, I did 22 years with the Department of Corrections, it was not unusual to have our health package reviewed on either a three to five-year basis. But this healthcare package has not been reviewed since 1997 or 2000, okay? It is not unusual for your employer and/or a government agency to retool, okay, take bids, take analysis of them, with which to compare. You don't always have to change that carrier, but it kind of keeps that carrier that you still have competitive, without doing that, this is totally irresponsible.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, my name is Brad Van Nuys, I live at 319 South McKinley Drive in Belleville. The first thing I'd like to do tonight is thank Mr. White back here for videotaping all the city council meetings before we get this deal underway with Charter. That was one of the questions that came tonight to ask you, and I'll be glad to let you answer when I'm finished, if you could give us a status update, where the city is at, on getting them, and the other thing I wanted to point out is, if we can't get this deal done on Charter, it'd be great to just get it like a streaming video and then post it on the city's website, and the reason I say that is, is we have a number of cable providers in Belleville, and not everyone has Charter, so that's the other thing. The issue has come up, I've been reading a little bit about it on the health insurance, or the insurance for the city, and I would like to point out that I do understand that while the city is under no legal obligation to procure professional services, whether it be legal, engineering, insurance, based on price, it's not illegal to competitively bid any of those services out. And I really would pose the question, whether or not you feel it's your duty to get the best deal possible on behalf of the people of Belleville and those you represent, thank you.
I will answer the first part.
Okay.
Met with Lindenwood University last week, and as you know, you might have read the paper, that they're looking at going to a television studio portraying for their students on a radio station, possibly up and running by fall, they are very interested in working with the city and taking this on as a project, we're working with, Charter happens to be who they're with over at St. Charles, so we're having some meetings, and we're working towards this in a way that I think will be the most affordable at the cities to do this, and plus it'll be an educational experience for the youth, for the college students, so that we are making progress.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have something to report back down the road. Anyone else this evening? Here and now, closed public participation. At this time, we will move into presentations, recognitions, and appointments, at this time I would ask for a motion to appoint Tim Price to his only Board of Appeals, do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? Excuse me, second by Alderman Hayden, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Regent.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Motion carries, Tim, are you still here?
Yes, sir.
Stand up, we thank you, Tim's an engineer with IDOT, and we look forward to his service, and I know he's already met with Emily and talked a little bit, and she'll be up to speed for the next only board of appeals, Tim, thank you very much. Thank you.
Is this a break to someone or just adding to?
No, we're not adding, we have, huh? We have, he's had a vacancy for several months. Huh? No, no, from zoning. I guess, Tom, Tom Pooch, Tom filled in temporarily and then with his travel again, gave me an alternate deadline of when he left, I think that was actually several months ago, and so we've been trying, and it took a little bit of time to work through the hoops to get Mr. Price through the IDOT chain to come in, so actually he's been in the works probably about two or three months, so it's all, it's all done now.
So, so we now have?
We have, we have a full beginning. Okay, as we've been doing every meeting, I want to make sure we recognize that this Word of the Month, or the Character Word of the Month, this month's perseverance, perseverance meaning staying with tasks, not giving up, and just again, to the Scouts again tonight here, we know that you follow the character traits in your duties as Scouts, and as good citizens, we're trying our hardest here to follow them to a certain, the Word of the Month is perseverance. This time we go to the reading of the minutes, the minutes of the regular city council meeting minutes held February 25th, 2012, what's your pledge?
Luke Brilken.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Seibert, do I hear the discussion? Yes, ma'am.
On page four, when we talked about the parade issue, and we'd really like it known that I've been using that line around the other committees to get that out.
The parade issue.
When we talked about that issue, supposed to both committees, I went to that committee, it was not there.
The Didesides were on, the Didesides were in the clerk's office waiting for, these were coming up sometimes.
I'm just asking that my remarks be added to the minutes.
Jennifer, we usually know that.
The second section? I'm going to pull up, yes.
Okay, with that addition, all in favor of accepting the minutes as in front of you, signified by saying aye. Close, motion carries, let me, before I go on, let me say that Linda Fields and Jerry Turner were excused tonight, both are excused for good, excuse reasons, but I want to explain that our deputy clerk is filling in, he asked him to read what Mr. Turner normally reads, so just in case there's any questions there, we're on this one too, our regulars. Okay, at this time I would ask for a motion to pay the claims payroll of persons.
Yes, you are, and we have the claims payroll in this court, please.
Motion by Alderman Anderson, second by Alderman Heisler, any discussion on the claims of payroll? Yes. Would you speak in the microphone, please?
I asked you a question about the amount of money by recreation expense to the finance director, I was told that you were going to discuss it today.
Debbie Bell, you want to come up, this is pertaining to Eckerd Florist?
Yes.
Debbie, you want to come up and make those comments? Alderman Hayden sent an email today, I think it was, right, David, and the email basically said that she had wondered why there was a claim, okay, the claim is to Eckerd Florist for a white flower show, Debbie, you want to explain? Debbie Bell is our manager of Recreation, Martha Redd.
Okay, that was for $600 to Eckerd's Florist, and actually, they have sponsored roses for years for our Daddy Daughter Dance, we have had seven years, they have graciously given us donations of those roses every year, except for the last two, they give them to us at cost, last year they gave it to 270 roses at $1.95, this year they gave 300 roses at $2 apiece, and if you go outside, that would cost you about $6 apiece, so we're saving about a third, or two-thirds, it's costing us one-third.
Debbie, tell me about the other.
I called and asked how much it would cost, and.
Did you ask them to donate?
Well, they have donated them for free for five years, in the last two years, they, we have purchased them at cost. The program has grown every year, we have gone to three venues, we had 600 people attending our Daddy Daughter Dance this year, I didn't think it was fair for them to pay, donate them anymore, I thought at least we could pay cost, and we're getting a great deal.
And Debbie, tell me about the other things, you told me about.
Okay, also, besides that, Eckerd's Florist for 12 years has provided the table decorations for the Mayor Collegiate Program, this is an auction fundraising program that we have every year, we've had it for 12 years, and so that's before the mayor has even been around, and they've given us the table decorations at no cost, and donated those services, and also this ward of Belleville, which basically, in conjunction with Bill and the department, provided that, and they provide the arch balloons at no cost, so, you know, we really appreciate the services they have given us.
Answer your question, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the claims, any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Regent.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries, zoning Board of Appeals advisory reports. I'd ask for a motion, do you want them to read individually, or do you want them all? I'd ask for, okay, I'd ask for a motion to read them by, well, just go ahead and read them.
Case number five, Sabrina Brown and Sheila Holton, youth variance for a child.
Your Honor, I believe that we accept the recommendation of the zoning board, which was to approve and have a proper ordinance drawn.
Motion by Alderman Musgrove, second by Alderman Arland, to approve case number five and have the proper ordinance drawn, discussion?
I was at that zoning meeting, and it raised a lot of questions for me.
Are people here for case number five, anyone?
I didn't see them.
Okay, I was really concerned, she really didn't seem to have a business plan put together, I didn't, I couldn't ask her how many employees she was intending to have, she seemed very vague, it just raised a lot of resituations for me.
There was no problem that I could see, she answered all the questions, she said she hires as many people as the state required for a child, made it quite clear to me.
Can we get a copy of her state license?
Will we issue the business opportunity, will we get a copy of the state license?
Right, right, exactly.
Do you know if the state, if DCFS is who goes through with that's a license, do you know if Illinois State law requires that they be screened for criminal charges before those licenses are issued?
I'm, honestly, I'm seeing a couple of heads nodding back in the room, I don't know that for a fact, but I would say that a state license for daycare, I'm sure that they, they've been pretty stringent on policy, so do you know the fact you can say?
I do, I'm a member.
He's the next, he's the next state.
Okay, but you do know the fact.
Well, I was concerned when I was looking at, I mean, the order, you know, the day running, a lot, many, many states don't actually require.
Were you at the street board at the zoning board here?
I wasn't at the zoning board, and that's why I'm really concerned about this particular case, because she runs over at home, but that's not the same as having payroll and taxes and vetting your employees, and this was such a big thing, I want to have 75 kids in there, that just seemed like a really big leap from in your house to 75 kids.
Well, they can't have that many unless they have the state's blessing. Yes, Alderman, try it.
Another question that was raised, and we talked about that at the meeting also, player, the green space, because it's out there at Westfield Plaza, I guess that'll all meet the requirements that.
Once again, they have to, to get their license, they have, these things are governed by the state's license, so we don't have a specific city license or ordinance that states have a green space now, it would all be based on the state's classification and qualifications, not on the.
I mean, you know, you've got that busy, like that 74th Street, it runs past there, in the back part of the building there, and for the kids to get out and play, and she's going to have that many kids, and I'm just wondering to make sure it's the safety of her kids.
Well, like I said, once again, I think we, the state licenses awful lot of daycares, you know, I have not, in 15 years I've been on this council, we have not gotten into, in a sense, micromanaging state on those licenses, and I don't know of any situations per se, that would have caused us to get more specific.
She did testify that she has been running daycare for children in her home since 1996, she's not a novice at this, and she knew what the rules were from the state, and very carefully had followed them, I checked to find out where the green space was going to be, they have double doors in the back of the building that she has allowed to use, and they have given her permission to build a fence around an area in the back of the building, so the kids will have a chance to go outside. It was not, I checked into the building and the area to find out myself.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve case number five and have the proper ordinance drawn, any further discussion? Such has been some questions asked, I'll ask for a roll call motion.
Alderman Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Regent.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Yeah.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Motion carries, next case.
Case number 11, Gary Lewinham, for a sign installation permit for Gary of Special Control.
We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second, second by Alderman Marson, to approve case number 11 and have the proper ordinance drawn, any discussion on this case? Right on, one second, I was just asking for. Fourteen, ma'am. We have a motion, we have a second to have the proper ordinance drawn and approve this motion as approved by the zoning board, to treat this to the side. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. Close, motion carries, case number 12.
For Angelica and Lauren McAtier, for a youth variance for a childcare center, we need a 2331 old column roll.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to accept the recommendation of the zoning board and have the proper ordinance drawn.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Kinsella, to approve case number 12 and have the proper ordinance drawn, any discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. Close, motion carries, case number thirteen.
Thirteen is Abdullah Abraham, for a associated permit for legal license of 701 Sterling Street.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to accept the recommendation of the zoning board and have the proper ordinance drawn.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, once again, second by Alderman Kinsella, to approve case number 13 and have the proper ordinance drawn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Close, motion carries, there is a known noted by Alderman Holt, anyone else? Duly noted, motion does carry, Alderman, case number 14.
Ricardo Chavez, for a sign installation permit for the area of Special Control of 100 North High Street, and we would apply the recommendation of the zoning board and have the proper.
We have a motion by Alderman Meyer, do I hear a second? Second. Second by Alderman Kinsella, do I have any discussion? All in favor of this motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye. Close, motion carries, we're on to the roll reports, Alderman Anderson.
Yes, Your Honor, behalf of the master certamen, I would make the motion to approve the long-term control plan, A request number 20 from 40 John 208 Morgue, for total model, A $182,031.25, that's a.
Motion by Alderman Anderson, do I hear a second, second by Alderman Heisler, do I hear the discussion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dave. Dave, do you, okay, second by Alderman, what is it? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt. Anderson.
Aye.
Regent.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Motion carries, this time I'd ask for a motion to approve stipulation between Illinois Republican Council and the city of Belleville, that the city will fulfill the provisions provided by the state of Illinois prior to opening the pool. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler, discussion? Alderman Hayden.
Your Honor, there's nothing in this stipulation that tells us what the costs are that we are agreeing.
We're not totally, we're not totally knowing yet, Mr. Sprague, why don't you explain what the, what the stipulation actually calls for tonight, this is the first step.
The stipulation doesn't mean we're going to do this, it just means that if we do it, they'll give us the license. The stipulation doesn't mean that we're agreeing with the state that we have to do it, that we're agreeing with the state, in order for them to give us the license, this is what we have to do to meet their requirements.
We're still investigating what it would take to get up to, to get pools to meet their requirements, but if we don't pass this tonight, then the pool's done, we will not get a license, and we'll not open this year. If we pass this tonight, then we have to, I've already instructed the staff, we have to see what the council's, you know, decision is tonight, we then, we are already working quickly, and we're working hard, because we're already behind the eight ball on time, to be honest with you, but we're working hard to try to determine what it will take financially and physically to get our pool to meet these stipulations, if you so agree to work towards them, try to, you know, to, if we're going to get a permit, we have to agree with the stipulations, that's what we want to hear tonight, but we don't have, we'll have, we'll probably have in a few days, and we'll send to all of you, once we have a good estimate on the cost. This afternoon, when talking to staff, you know, we agreed that if, you know, really asked specifically, and I'll just tell you, we believe the repairs could be as much as $50,000, to do everything that we need to do, knowing all the different conversations that we've had with this current stipulation and with the past, but we don't know that for sure until we have, we've got a few more, some research, and we need to have, make that decision, but this right now, this vote, if we turn this down, we've made a decision, the pool's done. My advice would be that we approve this agreement, and let us continue to work towards sensibly and intelligently, the pool has a long, great tradition, it serves many people, it is a tough decision financially because of the age of the pool, but I believe we need to pass this tonight, and we then need to do a little further homework and see if it's, if it is reasonable, and if it is possible that we can keep the pool alive. It is a tough decision financially because of the age of the pool, but I believe we need to pass this tonight, and we then need to do a little further homework and see if it's, if it is reasonable, and if it is possible that we can keep the pool alive.
Second question.
Yes.
Why is it already on the back signing the date by a state official, city official in the date of the call? Because the agreement was not going to be, so he has it, the agreement was, if it doesn't pass tonight, it's no good.
That's the understanding for them, with the Illinois Department of Public Health. We don't pass this tonight. He gave us...